Sorry, do I have a motion to reconvene to regular meeting?
So moved.
I said it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Johnson. Roll call.
Shaw.
Yes.
Travis.
Yeah.
Navarro.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes.
All right, we can all stand for our pledge allegiance. And if our student board members, if you would like to lead us.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public hearing. A hearing is being held to provide members of the public with the opportunity to address the board about the proposed amended budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Those wishing to speak during the hearing will be asked to sign up in accordance with the board's public participation procedures. The public hearing opens at 7:02. I believe there is none signed up for this public hearing. Oh, one on the wrong. Okay. All right, since there are no people who wish to speak on this, I close, the public hearing closes at 7:02. And we don't need a motion or anything for that.
No.
All right. Next we go up onto our resolutions.
Good evening, everyone. First resolution this evening is recognizing McKenna Miglerini. I do not believe McKenna could make it this evening. I'm just checking to see if there was a family representative. It does, does not appear so, but I'm gonna go ahead and read the, the resolution. Whereas Lockport Township High School student McKenna Miglerini earned all-state pole vault third place in the IHSA state finals on May 18th, 2024 at Eastern Illinois University in Charleston, Illinois. And whereas coaches Joe Kravitz and Olivia Farren have aided and guided McKenna Miglerini in her success as a Lockport Township High School District 205 student and athlete. And whereas McKenna Miglerini has brought honor and distinction to herself, family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on the 17th day of June 2024. We congratulate McKenna. Now at this time, I'd like to call up Nolan Lamerow. This resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School junior student Nolan Lamerow. Whereas Lockport Township High School student Nolan Lamerow earned all-state third place in the 400-meter dash at the IHSA state finals on May 25th, 2024 at Eastern Illinois University in Charleston, Illinois. Whereas coaches Tom Razzo and Ryan Gold have aided and guided Nolan Lamerow in his success as a Lockport Township High School District 205 student and athlete. And whereas Nolan Lamerow has brought honor and distinction to himself, family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on the 17th day of June 2024. Congratulations.
One, two, three. It probably took like five.
Nolan, Nolan, who's, who's here with you? Who are these fine individuals? So, yeah, great to see you guys. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That is huge.
Coach back here too.
Yeah, congratulations, everybody.
The next resolution for this evening is honoring and recognizing Assistant Principal at East Campus, Dr. Jennifer Webreu. Whereas Lockport Township High School Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Jen Webreu, has served 37 years in education and eight years at Lockport Township High School. And whereas Dr. Webreu has had distinguished service as an English-language learner teacher and school guidance counselor prior to her role as an assistant principal. And whereas Dr. Webreu has brought honor and distinction to herself, her family, her profession, Lockport Township High School District 205, and the community we serve through leadership excellence in master scheduling, professional development, curriculum implementation, innovative academic programs, and C, seeking educational equity and diversity facilitation. And whereas Lockport Township High School District 205 Board of Education would like to recognize her service, thank her for outstanding work, and wish her all the best in her retirement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on the 17th day of June 2024. Congratulations. One year twelve.
Yeah.
I, if I could just add too, as principal the last five years here and working with our outstanding administrative team and our staff, I also learned very quickly how important and invaluable it is to have great assistant principals. And one of the things I'm truly going to miss about being principal is being so close to Jen Webreu and how excellent she is as an educator, leader, but more importantly, as a person. So I just wanna personally thank her for everything that she's done for me and for our high school. Gonna miss you. And who is here this evening with you?
My husband, Joe.
All right, we have another, sorry, I'm multitasking tonight. Kathy Maxwell and myself as well, with Mrs. Maxwell out today. We have another resolution. Come on down, Mr. Tony Kandari. You know, have a stand, Mr. Kandari. I'll read your resolution tonight. You know, might add a little bit, just, just a wee bit. Whereas Lockport Township High School Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Mr. Tony Kandari, has served 36 years in education and 12 years at Lockport Township High School District 205. Whereas Mr. Kandari has had distinguished service as an English teacher, a building administrator, and district administrator prior to his role as an assistant superintendent. And whereas Mr. Kandari has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, his profession, Lockport Township High School District 205, and the community we serve through leadership excellence during the COVID-19 pandemic, maintaining state-of-the-art personnel systems, welcoming every new employee to the Porter family for the past 12 years, every single one of them, stewarding a collaborative relationship with our union partners, and fostering a people-first spirit in the Personnel Department. And whereas Lockport Township High School District 205 Board of Education would like to recognize his service, thank him for outstanding work, and wish him all the best in his retirement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 17th day of June 2024. Yeah, absolutely. And you know, just add a little, a little bit, you know, Tony and I were over there at the District Office having a weepy moment at the, at the copier. This is my last day working with Tony. Tomorrow is his last day and I'm gonna be heading to a conference. So we were realizing that. And we were really reminiscing that when things seemed to go quickly, you know, I said to Tony, gosh, I remember super cold January day in 2019. I was in a meeting with, with Mrs. Coy, with Tony, laughed. It was my transition period. We walked back over to the District Office. And I remember I thought, oh my gosh, I've just hit the jackpot of great, brand-new colleagues. And then in a minute, here we are. Five years just went like, like that. And I think everybody here knows that, you know, vacation goes quickly because you're had, you're enjoying it so much. And I can't say that Mr. Kandari and I, every single moment was easy. But I think every single moment was better because of our collaboration, our partnership. And just like Dr. Greenian said, that invaluable opportunity, the turnaround, our offices are right next to each other. Either Tony coming around the corner or me coming around the corner. Or even more hilarious, there have been times when we've both been coming around the corner. I think to solve some of the most difficult challenges that we've had in the past five years. And certainly, you know, Tony predates even by seven years. And I think the most important thing and the most humanistic thing that you do in the school is you try to solve the, the issues of the person in front of you. Yes, there's policy. Yes, there's procedure. But you try to look at that human being, just like we would look at a child in a school and say, yes, we have rules and yes, we have consequences. But we will, for this family and for this individual, try to solve that challenge. Let's, let's do this together. And Tony has always had that spirit with every single person he's worked with, including this never-before superintendent who started in 2019, right? You know, treated me with a lot of personal respect. So sad day, a bittersweet day, but as I always say, we're just starting a new kind of business relationship, right? So Tony Kandari, thank you. Kathy, maybe. And, oh, by the way, who is with you tonight?
My wonderful wife of just as long, thirty, how many years? Five years?
Yeah. Thank you, Pam. Thanks for everything.
And we always say for the resolutions, except for Tony, don't feel like you have to stay.
On behalf of the board, you know, thank you. Congratulations to those two, those two students, McKenna and Nolan. And thank you, Ms. Jennifer Webreu and Mr. Tony Kandari for all your years of service here at Lockport. Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the resolutions as presented?
So moved.
Second it?
Yes, I'll second it.
All right. It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Navarro. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next we have.
Do you want to spend a minute talking about the student board members?
Yes. Yeah, we're gonna do now the student board, student board.
I don't think we have a formal resolution. I would just invite board members. You know, what we tried to do is, you know, one, you were trailblazers. You were the first student board members on this Board of Education. Never happened before in, in the district. You know, I, I think myself as a superintendent, we appreciate your voice and we appreciate you coming to the table and representing all the students who every single day live and breathe at the district. You know, sometimes that can get lost in the busy things that busy adults are doing to be busy. And you just were a constant reminder the whole year of what it's like to just be a student and every morning get up and, and go to a place called school. You did it with class. You did it with style. You did it with thoughtfulness, thoroughness. I think in all the meetings you had to attend, we had two absences. That, that was it. You know, you had the spirit of Tori Del Ponte coming back from University of Iowa to make this, this very meeting. And what we try to do, like any time, is, is send you off, you know, with some gifts that we hope will, will steady you in the, in the future. If you dig into, there's a couple of things in your goodie bag. One is something we hope that makes it to Howard University, Iowa City, St. Louis. Yeah, you could, you could look at the card a little bit later on. But what we have in there, there's an acrylic in there that just memorializes that you were a school board member. We've got a little bit, you know, a little bit of swag from your respective universities. I know you already have some of that, but we didn't think you'd be wearing Porterware to college. You know, we hope you do take the acrylic. It's just a little memorial plaque really with you. And then there's also a keychain in there that just, you know, hope maybe reminds you of all the good decisions that you made to get to this. Oh, of course you can. Absolutely. You know, take a look at it. Just something we hope you take with you, you know, the first of many accomplishments you've had.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys. And it gives us opportunity.
Yeah, and let the other board members say anything. But I think the most important thing that I hope you realize is, you know, these days, I think representatives are busy, state senators are busy, congresspeople, busy, busy, you know, very, very busy. And, you know, boards of education are government that talk to you, right? They're governed by people who volunteer, you know, to keep this thing called democracy going, right? And I hope you've learned a sort of civic responsibility of contributing to, to your community, right? It just doesn't happen by itself. And like, like these board members, the only, you know, renumeration you got was the experience. So I really appreciate you being part of the democratic experience. Other board members?
I'd like to say thank you, guys. You were a constant reminder to me, at least, why I sit on the, on the board, you know. It's because of students like you and the other students. You brought the voice of your peers to the table to let us know. If we were talking the subject, let us know, have your input. When I was a student, I never had the chance to give my input to the school board. But we really appreciate it. You just don't know how much. And you will always be known as the first.
Oh, yeah.
Board member at Lockport. So maybe Dr. McBryant might put a plaque up somewhere.
Oh, perfect. Yeah.
You'll be expecting to see that when you come back.
When you come back, when you come back.
I just wanna say thank you as well and just to echo what Luann said. I remember when you guys came into your first board meeting, how excited you guys were. You were all dressed up. You had your laptops and you were ready to go. And I leaned over to the board member that was sitting next to me. I said, this is why I do this, like to the kids. So thank you for what you've done. You've opened my eyes up to a lot of things. Thank you for sitting on the Curriculum Committee. Your insight was very valuable while we were there. I just can't wait to see what you guys do because you're all gonna do something amazing.
That's true. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you also, you know, thank you. And I have to echo what Ms. Johnson and what Dr. Shaw said, you know. You guys were amazing. You know, you were very committed. And we learned from you guys and hopefully you learn from us.
We did. You set the bar high, like I said.
You did. You really did. You really did. And thank you, McKenna. And also I have to thank the cash also for being on the financing facilities, you know, committee. He was very, he was very helpful, you know, just giving us the insights to, you know, our, to our finances and facilities.
And all I, all I have to say is thank you for being the first of one of our newest traditions. For years to come, especially with that book that you guys made, we hope to fill it with all of the advice and all of the experiences for probably a whole nother century. And, you know, as my fellow board member said, we all grew together. So it is nice to be able to reflect that. And I hope you guys come back. I don't think your story with Lockport has ended yet.
Michael, do you have any comments?
I just wanna say thank, thank them for having the courage to be the first on the board. And I'm sure they're gonna do very well out there for the rest of their life. So just thank you. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Travis.
All right. Okay, then moving on. All right, two reports. The IASB report, Ms. Luann Johnson.
Well, I did attend the Free Rivers Governing Committee Board. They didn't do a whole lot. Mainly, it was a virtual meeting. Mainly, they talked about, you know, in next year, they always set two meetings. One is they're gonna decide to have only one legislative meeting. That's usually in the winter camp. And then they're gonna have a regular meeting, you know. And they voted to do it at a school. Okay? So, but I don't have, they don't have it set yet. So as soon as they get that information, I'll give it to you. And they also, I think they elected a couple of officers. But other than that, it was, it quit me actually with less than 30 minutes. I couldn't believe it. So that's it.
Anne Lopez Caniva and I were asked to present at Saturday's Illinois Association of School Boards President's Academy, which, which was, which was fascinating, you know. Probably do a proper debrief of it in your Friday update. I was invited to go to the whole day. Mrs. Lopez Caniva was at part of it. I was able to see, you know, obviously our presentation at the end of the day, but there was a public relations consultant that I think, you know, as we teased it out, I know how you felt about it. But so many important things about communication and reminders about communication that I found were, were, were very strong. We were on a panel to talk about how a board president and a superintendent worked together. And so Lori Grant, who many of you have met from IASB, would, would ask us questions. And we were with another superintendent and board president from Forest Park, Illinois. And it was just, it was interesting, the type of questions, the type of board presidents in the room, the things that they're all working with, working through, you know, all sounded very similar, you know, very, very similar. So it was very good, really good afternoon on Saturday.
It really was. I was, I was amazed at the amount of board presidents there that really, they don't communicate with their superintendent, you know. So I was very, you know, shocked that that is it. And they have no board update. They get all their information right at the board meeting and that's it. So there's nothing, you know. But, but yes, it was, it was very illuminating for us. And well-known, you know, most of the board presidents that they have, because we did like group projects and stuff. So most of them, they did recognize Lockport. And they said they, they gave us very kudos to us, you know. Great school. We've heard a lot from you, you know, but, but good. It's good news.
We're trendsetters, they can.
Yes, yes, yes. We are trendsetters. And yes, we even spoke a little bit about the student board members. We spoke a little bit about them. And they really don't, some, a great majority don't have student board members. And the ones that do have student board members, they would be sitting out in the audience and they would not be part of the board.
Sitting on the board.
Yes. So that was very interesting too. So, but other than that, we, it was good. You know, good turnout, great time. So, all right. Okay, foundation report.
Sadly, Mrs. Adolf is homesick and I thought her report would, would speak for itself. I'll, I'll highlight just two things and encourage Mrs. Adolf to, seems to have a really bad cold and want everybody who came to this meeting just, just to leave with their thoughts, not with virus. So I'm sorry that she's not here this evening. Two things I would highlight, last week, Banner Week, for, for the foundation. We had about 300 guests that showed up last Tuesday night. Tomorrow night, there's another movie night, movie night, Taylor Swift Iris Tour. I'd like to think it was Porter Stadium and the good weather that drew people. I have a feeling that it was Taylor Swift that drew people. We need to see people of all ages just come out, spread out on the field at Porter Stadium. Enjoy, you know, a movie together and just, just have that good music experience. And thank you to our neighbors. And then turn it around the very next day to, to have our 25th annual golf outing, which was excellent. Huge number of foursomes and golfers. It was great to have, you know, Ms. Ose was there, working the course as a recipient of a foundation scholarship. So, you know, and our board now is, is at a total of 15 members. So just a really great work to thread the community and, and, and the foundation in the, in the district. So, great job. Any, any questions about this from board members?
I'm glad to see that you're gonna bring that Young Hearts for Life back.
Well, I've, I've been involved with Young Hearts for Life now over 20 years. Long enough to see the, the founder, Dr. Merrick, has retired. It's amazing. I was, I just happened to land to be a young principal in 2005 when Young Hearts for Life was getting started, right? And I also have a brother in pediatric cardiology and reached out to him and just, you know, you know, hypertrophic cardiomyopathy. Been around a long time, you know. If you look past in that, that 25-year period, you see young people who have sudden cardiac arrest, right? And so they've been doing this. I was one of the first high schools, Downers Grove North, Glenbard East, where I was principal. And it's just blossomed now to really the whole Chicago area after that, you know, the years that they've been doing it. Last year, we had 10 students who had serious issues of variety of different things that their EKG pointed out and a lot of gratitude from their parents to point out, you know, those, you know, things that related to valves, splasgenes, you name it, but just things that need to be addressed that otherwise wouldn't not have been known.
Thank you. All right, legislative report.
Legislative report. I'm gonna try to pull this in for all of you. I'm gonna focus only on two bills. There were many, many in the wee hours that were passed in the, in the session and the session wrapped, wrapped up with the budget bill, which I'll make a mention of. Really appreciated, partnered House Bill 4636. That was the bill that, just to remind the board, it was adding language to how specifically the four oil refineries in Illinois are taxed from a property tax proposition. And what it was allowing, I know this gets a little complex, but it was opening up that those refineries could deem certain parts of their property what are called pollution control sites. And every time something is deemed a pollution control site, it is then taxed by the Illinois Department of Revenue, not a local organization like, like schools or anything that appears on a property tax. It really was opening the door to have these refineries deem many parts of their property, almost the entire property, you could make an argument as a pollution control site. Right now, we're, we're working with Citgo on another tax settlement with them. And we're allowed to do that under, under current law. Worked with all of our senators, Senator Hastings, Senator Curran. Worked with all of our senators, Senator Hastings, Senator Curran, um, Senator Campbell, um, uh, oh my gosh, Senator Ventura, you know, to, to try to get that moved. Worked, uh, quite a bit with, uh, Homer Township Supervisor Steve Ballish. We talked every day. There's good news and there's bad news. The good news is House Bill forty-six thirty-six never, it was called. It was never. And we felt, hooray. The language from forty-six thirty-six over the weekend, Memorial Day weekend, was inserted into the budget bill where the budget bill was passed, uh, under the revenue section of the budget bill. That sometimes happens, right? So, who knows what that means, right? We don't know what that means, how that, that ultimately these oil refineries will, will use that. But it was part of the revenue stream and could open the door to these oil, um, you know, refineries working with the Illinois Department of Revenue on their taxation, not with us as a local body. We'll, we'll see. Uh, House Bill forty-five eighty-two, um, I just put some things in, um, some huge changes in some school finance that directly impacts our situation. One, for the first time, uh, boards now can issue bonds for capital projects over thirty years. Uh, we were previously limited to twenty to twenty-five. Why is that important? Over thirty years, that lowers any kind of bond, any kind of debt, if you keep it for thirty years, the, um, burden on the taxpayer because your payments, you can, you know, stretch the payments out much, 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 much further. Did some other things. It lifted the cap on, um, some of the caps related to life safety and it's linked to the debt service extension. So, if under the school construction board, it, um, qualifies as life safety as the state defines it, it isn't linked anymore to the debt service limit. And I know all of you have gotten an education on the debt service limit that previously was our limit for how much bond power you had without referendum. This opens up, uh, life safety doesn't have that ceiling anymore. Um, if it qualifies as life safety, and that's important. It's not life safety because we say it's life safety. It does have to get approved. So, let me stop there. These all go into effect July one, twenty twenty-four. There's a whole host of other bills, but. Any questions about those? Mr. Travis, any, any questions?
No, none at this time. None at all.
Okay, public comment follow-up, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, great. Uh, we had, this is, uh, from our May twentieth board meeting. There were eight total individuals who spoke at public comment. At, at this point, I've reached out to all of those individuals. I'll say to the public, some of the individuals that are, that are in this room, I guess one of the most important points that on behalf of the board, I, I'm gonna continue to strike home is we, we are government that, that will talk to you. Anybody who comes to this table, we will always schedule, request to schedule a meeting in person because I think it's a belief that, you know, five minutes is never going to tease out something that's substantial or complex. Also, I just believe that folks sitting down in their community, rolling up their sleeves, if it's important enough to be at public comment, it's in my humble opinion for the board, important enough to, to really dig into it. All eight of the people, um, who were at public comment were, were offered that. I appreciate that. Candace Garretson, she's here. She's, she's the only one that, that took me up on that offer. And, um, with some of those people in the room right now, I, I hope we can see that change. The worst that can happen is you're disappointed in the meeting. Um, and then you're disappointed. And, and you didn't feel that you got a good hearing. You didn't feel that there was a substantial conversation. But I think if we're gonna solve the most substantial problems in our community, in any kind of school, we're gonna have to do that, rolling up our sleeves and having a conversation that's more than Facebook or more than five minutes. And I, I, I just think that's so important. Um, and I, and I wish we, I wish we'd see that. I hope to see a change. I'm, I'm an eternal optimist, uh, on that. Um, had a good conversation, uh, with Mrs. Garretson, her concern with some, some of these important issues that we're dealing with, that the board continues planning and moving forward. We'll talk a little bit about that, uh, later in the superintendent report. And I explained some of the things that we're doing to, to do just that. So, appreciate the time, you know, to have a conversation. Um, I'm gonna aggregate the other, the other seven because there were a few themes. I put the themes up there and maybe try to address each of these themes to the board and the research we've done. Uh, there were concerns about Lockport Central Campus and additional board funding of any kind, um, for that building. Uh, that building, uh, its oldest section's a hundred and fourteen years old. Its newest section's from the nineteen, nineteen fifties. There, there are sort of two facts that, that I think the community has to, to confront. One, uh, at least this board believes strongly in a freshman center. The research base behind that, what happens when seven feeder districts, uh, come in to, to, to one space. The second is, East Campus and Central are the home, the buildings that the community has given us. We have a responsibility to, to house all of our students. Those are the two buildings. We will not have a new addition or a new building just suddenly come up out of the earth overnight. And so, there is a responsibility to, to make sure that Central Campus, in the most practical, economical and, um, uh, fiscally responsible way, is ready to receive students. And that's happening right now, kind of in the first stage of that, where we're wrapping up all of those, those, those new, new ceilings that are, that are being, being put in. Funding, last month, you agreed to a very conservative, uh, using some cash reserves in a way that is responsible and doesn't expose the district to any kind of, um, down-the-road liability. Using some life safety bonds, but not issuing those right away. You wanna really take a look at when is the right time to issue those life safety bonds. And then seeking alternative funding sources. So, all three of those prongs are happening right now. So, that when students return in August to the freshman building, uh, they will return to someplace once other additional work is being done. Mr. Thompson has shared with the board, roof. You wouldn't want to put all those new million-dollar ceilings in and not make sure you take care of the roof, which hasn't been, uh, fully replaced, completely replaced since nineteen eighty. Electricity, very, very important, right, to modernize, uh, electricity. Um, any kind of masonry, you know, it's a masonry building. You've gotta deal with that, right? Those are some starters. Uh, those are very basic, very economical, very practical improvements. There's no plan by this board to do a full renovation of the building. You heard the voters in, um, in, in March. So, you don't have a plan on the board to suddenly, um, you know, do a stem to stern renovation. You tested that with the voters and, you know, that's the best kind of survey is, is a vote, you know, where people have an opportunity to go to the booth and, and, and say what, what is on their mind. There were questions about taxation and how that relates to facility improvements. I think the name of the game that, you know, we have a whole, long list of tax controls that you've enacted. Your tax rate continues to be the lowest of all the high school districts around us. You abated debt service last time you did, um, a levy. Using cash reserves, that lowers the debt, um, responsibility of the community. And not issuing bonds just as a knee-jerk reaction. When you issue those, how you issue those, which fiscal year you issue those in, all of that, you know, helps to, to, to limit the, the impact on, on the, the average homeowner. The resolution that you approved last month, my understanding of that is that, that your directive to us is that that is not a referendum strategy and that is not a sudden high, um, debt, high taxation strategy. You're really saying work within our means, work within our finances. And corporations, schools regularly use debt because it's affordable to us, because it's manageable and we can maintain it and we can stretch costs for taxpayers over a long period of time. The definition of life safety as it's defined by Illinois School Code and by the School of Construction Board, I think there was a confusion between life-threatening and life safety. Every school district in Illinois properly should have a ten-year life safety. Uh, those are all the type of things that are, are in place to make sure that the human beings can occupy the building. Fire prevention and suppression systems, heating and cooling, roofs, proper structure, proper foundation, proper electrical, proper washrooms, uh, proper alarms, uh, secure entrance, all of those things. Many times when life safety is mentioned, that's maintenance and replacement. Sometimes those are very expensive, like a roof, very expensive to do a full, a full replacement, uh, for life safety. Thus, your, your referendum do, you know, so, so many different things, right? That is not synonymous with life-threatening. They're, they're not the same. Life safety does not imply this is life-threatening. When you slightly detected as a board, one room, room three-ten, was life-threatening. There was no further evidence that there was a life-threatening situation in that, um, in, in that building. But you took the extremely cautious, and I agree, closing the building, having W J E come through, examine three hundred and seventy-nine separate ceilings, separate rooms, closets, bathrooms. Those reports are all available online, um, to make sure, and then having any system, even, even at that, any ceiling system, like the ceiling system that, that, um, failed, have that removed and completely replaced. That did two things for you. It gave you peace of mind that absolutely, we're not gonna have any kind of system like that in the building anymore. It also allowed you to open that building up and look deeply into the integrity of that building, address any kind of carpentry or masonry integrity issues and ensure that that building is, is, is fit and proper. And that's, that's addressed. During that, there was a particular moment. I don't believe that public comment is intended to call people liars. Simply put, to use that kind of language, when you can go to our website, every single report is available. When people can look for themselves, I could pull the, the website up right now. It's outrageous. It crosses a line. It's not the purpose of, of public comment. I think the person who made that claim to you owes you an apology unless they can back it up. There was a time and a place where manners had a time and a place. And calling a person a liar or calling a school board liars, that's just bad manners. It's bad form. Also, there's, there's something I want you to understand, Ms. Del Ponte and Ms. Ose, why on the board, we, we don't react. I felt very badly. I got a lot of feedback about the way that you were treated at the last board meeting. Our belief is that your students, any idea that you have is an idea we'll listen to and we'll take in, just like any idea that we hear. I felt terrible. I feel like owe you an apology because the reason why we don't respond is we don't want a meeting like this to devolve into the Jerry Springer Show. Right? We, we don't want to sit up here and have, we want to listen. But for, for someone to turn to you and dismiss your opinion, I just want to apologize to you.
Thank you for that, Dr..
And, and, and when we left, I, I hope you didn't think less of us for not saying something. But I'll tell you, I lost a lot of sleep over that. I wouldn't want my daughters to be talked to that way. I know that as a dad with Father's Day yesterday. So, I hope you accept my apology, um, and, you know, for what that's worth. But that's not what public comment is for. The interpretation of the recent referendum results, we've received a lot of feedback that the recent referendum results from those speakers, it's winner-take-all. It's type of situation that it was a no vote, so that discounts any yes vote, that that means no money should go into Central at all. And I think you know as board members, it's just not that simple. You had forty-six percent said yes. You had fifty, um, uh, three percent, forty-seven percent who said no. And you are in the unenviable position. If you have to listen to everybody, I think you were very wise to a community survey. We'll take the first peek at that. That community survey has seven hundred people giving you a sense of, of maybe what, what's a good way for, what's a sensible way for. But certainly, it doesn't say ignore everyone who voted yes, do only what we perceive that the no vote. It's just, it's, it's not that kind, you know, simple. If it was that simple, we, we wouldn't be having these, these kind of meetings. Several people talked, they used afraid of redistricting and I just want to share with the board and the public, what that really is under School Code is called detachment or annexation. And, um, as I've shared with you, that is a lengthy, a laborious, a litigious, um, divisive, uh, topic and process. The state, state School Code has set up detachment and annexation to be incredibly difficult. In Will County, there are two cases that have now gone on fifteen and twenty years' perspective because it's so, it's so difficult.
Which two cases, if you don't mind?
Uh, there are a, um, two subdivisions in Ulytics that.
Cherokee.
Right, that go to, uh, Joliet Central and would like to go to one of the Lincoln Way schools. That's been going on now, you know, for, for quite, quite some time. The, the process is, is strenuous. It's not easy. It's arduous. And I, and I, and, you know, looking it over, working with your attorney, understanding what, what, what detachment and annexation it entails, it's, it's divisive, right? Um, it's the divorce, right? And, you know, the analogy that I would use for some of the speakers is if I went to Mrs. McBride and said, not only do I want to divorce you, but I want you to do the research on, on how I divorce you, I, I think that'd be two pieces of bad news that, that Mrs. McBride would not like to hear, right? I, I don't know how that solves some of the district's issues, you know, but, but it's a, it's an extremely strenuous for the whole community process. Questions that you have about public comment?
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment session of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy Two, colon, two-three-oh, and Policy Eight, colon, three-oh, available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. Let's see, first we have Ms. Reagan Hayes.
Mr. Travis, there's a handout coming around and I'll make sure you get it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Since two thousand and six, the district has placed six referendums on the ballot to borrow money and build a new nine-to-twelve high school building in Homer Glen and has come up short on each one. The March referendum tried a different approach, a so-called renovation of Central Campus. The referendum was a tough sell for a number of reasons. The district passed record-high levies in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. The bond P and I added to the tax bill would be similar to the current record-high levy that just passed. The district stated they would issue the bonds today, requiring the taxpayer to start paying interest so that they could earn interest on the bond funds and spend more money on the project. The project would take up to five years to complete. At the January eleventh special meeting, the district stated they would be eight million dollars short of completing the project over five years. And the renovated campus would still require students to walk blocks to the ballfields for outdoor P E, have minimal room for expansion in the future, and not save much money on the operating and maintenance budget. And it would still not be fully ADA compliant. While all this was being planned, over the night of November first, a ceiling in a third-classroom collapsed. At the November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three board meeting, Dr. McBride stated that the referendum was basically a two-part question. First, asking if Central Campus should remain a school and then asking if the district should borrow eighty-five million dollars to renovate Central. The result, as we know, was a forty-six-point-six percent yes and a fifty-three-point-four percent no. One of the slides you have, uh, includes a probability analysis and a margin of error, which essentially points out that no matter how you cut it, the proposal to rehab Central lost and would still lose ninety-nine out of one hundred times statistically. The board needs to ask itself, where do we go from here? The answer requires a holistic approach, looking at the entire district and not just. The answer requires a holistic approach, looking at the entire district and not just Central Campus. One of the board's roles is protecting district assets, which includes facilities and how funds are being spent. As you would do with a medical diagnosis, we believe you need multiple options given by multiple firms. While you have a working relationship with DLA for decades, a fresh set of eyes on the district may bring about new perspectives for the board to consider. In the frequently asked questions on the district's referendum page, one answer references a two thousand and twenty-two demographic study claiming that enrollment may increase up to four hun- four thousand, two hundred students by two thousand and thirty-two. On the district's website, though, this study and the February two thousand and twenty-two board workshop presentation shows a decline to thirty-four hundred by two thousand and twenty-eight to two thousand and twenty-nine school year and below thirty-four hundred by the two thousand and thirty-one to two thousand and thirty-two school year. Looking at the capacity of both campuses, the state of Illinois has a standard size for classrooms, generally thirty square feet per student for general ed, fifty per student for science, art, and tech, and larger areas for gymnasiums and field houses. This school has imposed a maximum capacity of twenty-one students per classroom regardless of the actual size. At the May nineteenth board meeting, students mentioned how crowded East campuses, and the district's own capacity study shows East to be six percent over capacity. If enrollment were to grow to forty-two hundred by two thousand and thirty-two, Central would be six percent over capacity and East would be fifteen percent over capacity. Though if enrollment were to fall to thirty-four hundred based on the district's published studies, both campuses will be at less of ninety percent capacity. If the board were to increase East's capacity by twenty-five percent, it could hold the total student population if enrollment were to drop below thirty-four hundred. Any work which doesn't address capacity issues is short-sighted. And it makes people wonder if borrowing forty to fifty million on Central now will make it easier to pass a referendum to expand in five years if needed.
All right, next we have a Mr. John Waters. Or Walters?
Walters.
Walters, I'm sorry.
Yeah, John Walters.
All right, I'm here again. At the May thirteenth special board meeting, the board was presented with the preliminary results of the community survey, which was created to obtain advice and input for the board. Within thirty-five minutes of getting the results, Mr. Stees had created a short speech outlining the plan for the district to proceed. Even though the negative sentiment regarding the Central Campus was consistently near the top of all areas of the survey, Mr. Stees' plan was to proceed with the work without renov- with the renovation project, just finance without voter approval. Why rush to fix Central Campus? Looking at the expenditure expenditures from the Capital Projects Fund since two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, the district has spent nineteen point three million on East while spending less than four hundred thousand on Central. That may not be a good analysis because East is two and a half times bigger. What about spending per square foot? The operation maintenance budget, we, we spent more, we spent twenty percent more on East over the last five years. When added together, since two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, the district has spent over twice as much per square foot, foot on East as Central. The, the last addition to the Central Campus, Campus was nineteen fifty-eight. Americans with Disabilities Act was passed in nineteen ninety. We're in two thousand and twenty-four. Would the renovations address the floors where a wheelchair-bound individual cannot navigate alone? As you can see in the pictures on one of the sides, how long do we have to let the restrooms look like this? Why rush to fix life safety issues at Central? Look at the items on the priority list. The safety issues haven't even been addressed since being identified twenty-eight years ago. April eighteen seventy, nineteen seventy-seven, Jimmy Carter passed an, addressed the nation regarding the energy crisis. Forty-seven years later, the Central Campus still has single-pane windows. The board presently frequently says the biggest fear is the boilers at Central's will fail and we not be able to use Central until they're fixed. As anybody asked the director of, Director of Facilities Management regarding this, the HVA system has been on the last three life safety reports beginning twenty-eight years ago. From the May sixth Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, likelihood of a major failure is minimal. Designed with built-in redundancies, put the replacement towards the end of the priority list. How urgent are these life safety issues? In two thousand and sixteen, the district spent over five million dollars resurfacing a new parking lot, renovating baseball fields, upgrading the auditorium, while then have numerous life safety issues that have been outstanding for decades and some interested. Funds have been scarce. Here are, here we have a combination of the May two thousand and twenty-three projections and the May two thousand and twenty-four projections. From July two thousand and eighteen to June two thousand and twenty-three, the district ran annual bus- budget surpluses averaging over five million dollars a year. When we look at life safety issues that haven't been addressed in decades, the aging decline in the facility that was allowed to happen and is, and the prioritization of non-Central projects while running multi-million dollar surpluses, we have to ask, why are we rushing to fix Central? How accurately can we predict the cost of fixing up Central? The ceiling flaps in November first, and on December eleventh, the Finance and Facilities Committee was told DLA provided a two-point-two million to two-point-seven million estimate. On February twentieth board meeting, the board approved four hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars for the ceiling remove, removal project. The board approved sixty-eight thousand for assessment abatement, abatement in April fifteenth. Remember that two-point-two million to two-point-seven million estimate on May twentieth? The board approved three-point-four million for the ceiling replacement and structural improvement. A two-point-seven estimate, we are now at four million dollars with the final phase yet to come. Speakers during the public comment have warned about the board about the surprising come, surprises that come up when working on old buildings. With this three million dollar project and is fifty percent over initial estimate, you should be asking yourself, how much will your save Central option really cost? Thank you.
All right, next we have a Mr. Jay Rody.
Okay. Reorganization. Reorganization for a school district as defined by the Illinois State Board of Education is an umbrella term that in, that includes consolidation, annexation, and deactivation. This can take, this can take form of two or more districts merging to create a new district, incorporating all or just part of one school district into another district, or the closing of a school and sending those students to a new district. Why reorganize? Make a difference in both achievement and the number of course offerings available to students. Financial incentives from the state. Utilize excess capacity in another district. More cost-effect, more cost-efficient school districts. Increase academic and extracurricular opportunities for the students. Now, Board Member Lance Stees gave multiple reasons why this makes sense. He told us Lockport voters voted down a new facility in Homer Glen and will vote no for a new building at East. Homer Glen doesn't want to update Central Campus, and clearly Crest Hill doesn't want to commute to Homer Glen. District two oh five is surrounded by Lamont Township District two ten, Consolidated District two thirty, Lincoln Way District two ten, Joliet Township District two oh four, Plainfield District two oh two, and Valley View District three sixty-five U. Reorganizing based on a community or on the boundaries of an existing school district isn't divisive. It allows the friendships that students created between K and eight to continue on. So when we look at Crest Hill, moving these students would eliminate the daily commute over the Ninth Street Bridge. Plainfield and Crest Hill are K two twelve districts, but the three surrounding districts have higher tax rates than D two oh five, so this would be difficult. Fairmont and Tass School Districts, removing those areas from D two oh five will not reduce two oh five's enrollment enough to have an impact on facility needs, and Joliet's tax rate is also higher than two oh five. Then we look at Will County School District ninety-two. Tax rates are close to ninety-two. The tax rates of two oh five are close to ninety-two taxpayers, but we see an increase in their high school property tax if they move to Lamont two ten. While this would allow two oh five to consolidate all the students at East, both Lockport and Lamont would have minimal capacity for any increase in future enrollment. So now we have to look at thirty-three C. Lamont neighbors thirty-three C, and their tax rate is close to two oh five's rate, but Lamont does not have the capacity for thirty-three C students. But Lincoln Way District two ten does. Lincoln Way's four high school buildings have a capacity of over eleven thousand students, while their enrollment currently is only sixty-six hundred. An excess capacity of forty-four hundred can easily handle the seventeen hundred students, students from thirty-three C, leaving District two ten still only operating at seventy-five percent. The tax rate for Lincoln Way is lower than two oh five, so thirty-three C taxpayers may actually see a reduction in their property taxes. In the March election, almost fifty-nine percent of Homer Township voted against the referendum. Two oh five is planning tax increases to fund Central and East Campus work, while Lincoln Way has no major projects even in sites for at least ten years, maybe even longer. But why stop it just redistricting and utilizing thirty-three C? Why don't we do this? What if two oh five merged with two ten? A combined district would be utilizing seventy-five percent capacity of combined districts, five buildings, making Lockport Central Campus completely unnecessary. What will the combined district save? Lincoln Way's lower tax rate could save taxpayers for District two oh five almost seven million dollars on their tax bills. Other than maintaining heat at a level to protect the interior and electric and keeping water available at Central, one point seven million dollars of their operating budget would be eliminated. Duplicate overhead and administrative expenses will provide an additional four to seven million dollars in annual savings. What will we gain? SAT scores are five to ten percentage points higher at two ten. All Lincoln Way schools are exemplary. Lincoln Way's operating expenses per pupil is nine percent lower than two oh five. Lincoln Way is funded at seventy-two point five percent adequacy compared to ours here at eighty-four percent. And what that represents, it relates into accomplishing more with less. And best of all, it increases opportunities for students everywhere. Thank you. And kids, congratulations. You got a seat at the table. Please, you're going to accomplish great things. Don't ever let anybody paint you as a victim, because you're not. Thank you.
Next we have a Mr. Mark Alron.
Yeah. It's Mark Alron, a recently appointed member of the Advisory Council, and happy to be Maybe wait just a second until everybody gets their copies. All right. There's a lot of material to cover, so I'm going to talk fast. Thanks for letting me speak, and I'm going to talk about the exciting opportunity to expand this beautiful East Campus as an option, one of the options on the table. So, second page. The debate on building new versus fixing old, I think you could say divisive, but I do think it was a healthy one. I think both sides learned an awful lot in the process. The end goal's the same. It's to provide the best learning environment for our freshmen. So here are the key themes. I'm not going to go through the slide point by point. Enrollment is declining. I mean, we've heard the numbers as well. I just picked out one. I've heard the students speak about it. I've talked to a lot of parents. I've heard it from my fellow council members. So a separate freshman experience is the right thing. If it is located here, however, it, the facility, the building does not have to have every single thing that a standalone high school would need. There's a lot of things on this campus, like the auditorium, sports field are examples, that we would not need to rebuild. We would leverage them here. It'd be built for modern-day learning, be a hundred percent ADA ready. The new building is long-term, and I consider it strategic. Next slide, we don't have a space at East. It was an argument went back and forth. Got an aerial view of East on the slide, and it's a hundred eight acres. The new freshman center can be located on a five-acre footprint south of the existing campus. New parking can be added, this traffic's an issue. And to make room, the soccer fields would have to be relocated, and we can move them to Cedar Road. And if the golf teams agree to exclusively use Broken Arrow, we might be able to remove the golf course for more space on this campus. Next, next is a wider aerial view, which just shows, you know, the proximity of East to the land in Cedar. I think everybody knows it's, it's fairly close. There's a hundred ten acres there, plenty of room for a few soccer fields, maybe a fieldhouse, and other desired use for the land, which we've heard, like solar. Using Cedar Road land shows the community that the district is best utilizing the assets that we already own. Next slide. It's a busy one, but it, it, it's a table that shows all the various numbers that have been thrown around over the last four months, five months, on the cost of a new high school. So the first, the second col- the first column's the rental. Second and third column are numbers that were, were used in the run-up to the election. They were, to me, they were for standalone schools with all the amenities, and of course the price is high. The, the cells that are shaded in green are recent estimates. I think it has an interaction between residents and the board, and we actually got an updated estimate on what a standalone freshman center would be, I think with DLA's input, and that's, that's in that middle column. And then the last, the, the, the next column over is, is a number that was obtained off of a, using a calculator on a, a website of a company that is, is very reputable in building schools internationally. And the last column are examples of recent schools being built here in Illinois. Okay, next, is, is new really better? I mean, I, I think the answer is yes. New construction is strategic, it's going to last for fifty to seventy years. More predictable than rehabbing, gives you exactly what you require, a hundred percent ADA compliant. New is better. So we can, the next two slides are just pictures. Everybody loves pictures. So, you know, we can just go over those quickly, but that, these are actually from the two school projects being built here in Illinois. And, you know, I think what you can do with a blank slate and building new is way better than what you could do with rehab. So. Slide nine is we could actually preserve some of the history of Central. You could, you could design, the designer can make the entryway look just like Central to carry on. It's, it's connecting the past with the future. The next slide, ten, we could take artifacts from Central that are very important to the community, historical artifacts, as shown in these pictures. Slide eleven, you know, I, I've heard it would take five years to build new, so that's maybe why we're just going to not consider it. I think looking at the slate of new construction over the last several years in Illinois, it looks like it's about two and a half years, and this is a sample schedule. Okay. The, the last slide is, the next one, pros and cons. I think I've said them, just as a recap, and then the last one is to, I think this, this dovetails very nicely with the, with the master planning process. Is one option that we should, we should flush out and consider. Thank you.
All right, next we have a Mr. Carmen Morella.
Ted Boras.
Sorry.
How you doing?
My name's Carmen Morella. Thanks for letting me take some time here to speak a little bit, now that I have six children out of high school. Just wait till everybody gets their.
So your youngest just graduated?
My youngest just graduated, yes. Thank you. And being alumni. And being alumni, I appreciate Lockport, so. So we'll just go through a few things. Between December and March election, how many times did we hear the following? When it was suggested that the district utilize some of its cash balance to pay for renovations? Funds are restricted. We don't have a chunk of money we could use for this purpose. We wouldn't have money to pay the people that educate the students, and we wouldn't be legally using the funds for the purpose we were told the taxpayers were levying for. You know, so that just talks about a few highlights of how a referendum works. Mrs. Johnson, Mrs. Johnson also has presented that the fund balances with Mr. Thiessen, there's millions of dollars in reserves. And how much does the district have available? Mr. McBride frequently states that the board's policy is between six and 12 months, or nine to 12 months of cash on hand. Well, the board policy that's on the website, 420, states that the district will strive to maintain 150 days cash on hand. That's five months. What if we targeted a six month cash on hand? That makes $20 million available. This graph shows the effects of the district's past balance if we had used $20 million in June of 2021. Completely strip it away. The yellow line represents the board's policy level of five months. The black line represents the six months of the current year's distribution. As you can see, by using $20 million, the district would have been above policy minimums in every month and only fallen below six months in April and May of 2022, right before the first installment of the tax comes in. By June 30th, the date the state uses to calculate the district's annual fiscal profile score, fund balances are well above the six month requirement to get the highest rate. What about the claims? If we use cash reserves, we have to wait for the funds to fix emergencies. Let's compare how some of the ceiling repairs it is taking to compare as long as District 92 to issue non-referendum debt. So in 2021, 2022, district issued $13 million in debt, District D-92. The board passed its resolution to issue debt at the November board meeting and receive the funds by the end of February. The proceeds took less than 104 days and was delayed because the December boarding was less than 30 days from the November resolution. The ceiling collapsed on November 1st. Our latest target date is August 19th. That's 291 days since the event happened. This also doesn't take into account that you'll still have over $35 million in fund balance at any given time. We'd also like to thank Mr. Thiessen for showing the board that there is, there are more ways to financial capital projects than just increasing our taxes, whether through referendum or just board approval. We can always do a special assessment. Why not work with various groups and individuals? Pledge drive. Similar to a special assessment, alumni, community members out there in the district can agree to pledge. Lease certificates. Similar to issuing debt, except they are paid for, from the operating fund, based on the latest district projections. Minimum budget surpluses going forward, probably not a feasible thing. Besides cash balances and other financial options, which doesn't require increase to the debt levy, the district will probably need additional funding for any new construction. Going to referendum has been a loss in many past years. The district will abate, this is a good suggestion. We can abate 35% of the last levy. After transferring 35% of the actual surplus to the debt service fund, this will allow the district to retain 40% of the actual surplus. Any premium reserves from the issuing the debt and an above market interest rate will use over the life of the debt to reduce the district's board levy. The new construction could be accommodated by passing referendums of little as $20 million. While we show no non-referendum debt in the calculation, we should not advocate issuing non-referendum debt. By utilizing cash balances, non-referendum debt would be the district's contingent plan after a five to 10 month cash balance remains. Think of it as a line of credit available when necessary for short term means, five years or less needed. The more alternative financing solutions the district can utilize, the lower the impact of all the taxpayers and the greater likelihood of a referendum pass. Those were our suggestions. Thank you.
Next, we have on this side, Jody Benson.
Does everybody? First, a quick shout out to Mrs. Johnson. When the discussion of fixing Central Campus began at the July 22 board meeting, Mrs. Johnson asked for options with cost benefit analysis. She stated that the latest addition to East was designed to be expandable. When the renovation price was dropped from 115 million to 85 million, she asked what items were eliminated to arrive at the lower cost. I'm not sure if Mrs. Johnson ever received answers for those requests, but it would be nice if those answers were shared with the public. As Mrs. Johnson alluded to, the district needs to analyze multiple options. Dismissing an option because someone says that it costs more isn't proper due diligence. Through the fall of 2023, the board was told new construction costs more than renovation, even though they were comparing a new 450,000 square foot building to renovating a 220,000 square foot building. Even the DLA architect told the board at the September 23 board meeting that it wasn't an apples to apples comparison. In the business world, large decisions are made based on return on investment. When comparing building options, all options should undergo a life cycle cost analysis, which analyzes the cost of not only building, but operating a building throughout its lifetime or an extended period of time. While building A may initially cost less, its annual expense may be higher, making building B a less expensive option over 20 to 30 years. Mr. Thiessen doesn't seem to understand the concept of or rationale for a life cycle cost analysis. You don't need identical options in order to compare them. If each option will accomplish the same outcome, the analysis will show you the total cost, and this will aid in making an informed decision. Accommodating and educating a certain number of students is the goal. If it can be done in a facility of a different size, a life cycle analysis should be one part of the decision making process. If you can accommodate and educate the same number of students in a newer, smaller, more efficient facility than the older, bigger Central Campus, why would you not look into it deeper? In slide four, I provided a simple cost comparison analysis of the referendum you approved and our idea for a new building. When the renovation would cost, while the renovation would cost $5 million less at the outset, it's not the whole picture. During a YouTube Q and A, Mr. McBride stated that the O and M savings would be seen in the utilities cost with the installation of more efficient systems. To establish the life cycle cost, we reduced the utilities by 40%, which is very generous. With the new building, 20% smaller and even more efficient, we reduced the renovated building's utilities by an additional 1/3. While there is no reduction in repairs and maintenance for this renovated building, we assume the new building would require half as much in repairs, being that it's 115 years younger. The new annual O and M expenses would be $282,000 less with the new building. Even though the new building is 20% smaller, we did not use any reduction in O and M staffing. Although the new building costs $5 million more than the renovation, we're borrowing $35 million less. Interest on the debt is $1.7 million less for the new building. That brings the annual cost of the renovation to 5.5 million, compared to the new building's annual cost of 3.8 million, which translates to a $29 million savings over 20 years. In conclusion, on a multi-million dollar project that the taxpayers will spend decades paying for, the board needs to look at all costs, not just the initial costs of the project. The board, as well as the taxpayers, should be questioning why none of this was provided to the board before being asked to place a referendum on the ballot. If our vendors have Mr. Thiessen's attitude, where, I'm sorry. If, if, if our vendors have Mr. Thiessen's attitude, where they would prefer not to evaluate comparisons, it's definitely time to consider new vendors. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Kami Hayes.
Okay, all right. What about Central Campus? If an option other than fixing Central Campus is chosen, what happens to Central Campus? Closing Central Campus will eliminate 1.7 plus million from the O and M budget. The district budgeted $240,000 this year for utilities alone, expecting students and staff to occupy the building for a normal school year. Without inhabitants, a large amount of these expenses go away, while almost all other expenses completely disappear. Secondly, the district's mission statement is based on educating and preparing students for the future. This district is not in the real estate development or management business. No decision should ever be made based on what a potential buyer would want or need. Other than a roof to keep the interior dry, any feature necessary for a school will not increase the sale value and will most likely be removed by a potential buyer anyway. With that being said, imagine a Central Suites of Lockport, a combination of business offices and residential units with an onsite fitness center, including a pool and a gymnasium, or seniors at Central, senior living with an onsite cafeteria dining facilities. Again, this board is not to be concerned with what a buyer would want. However, the city's economic development department should take the lead here to putting a multi-million dollar property back on the tax rolls. This is an important project for the city of Lockport, not for the LTHS board. In conclusion, we have given the board multiple options to explore and consider. Mr. Thiessen claimed his plan can make Central fully functioning for $35 a year. When was Central deemed not fully functioning, prior to the ceiling incident? But this is just in year one. It understates the 24 year amount of the tax increase by 50 to 100%. The district's current debt will be paid off by 2029, at which time that taxpayer would see a $65 drop to zero in their tax levy. Mr. Thiessen's borrowing would increase that individual debt levy in year one by $35 and keep it 50 to $100 higher than the scheduled after 2030. The graph shows the proposed debt service. The blue columns are the remaining debt, district debt payments. The light green is all the new borrowing. The taxpayer, Mr. Thiessen's proposal, is currently paying $65 and will be zero at 2030. His proposal would increase that to $100 and delaying the $0 until 2049. That is 25 years from now. To recap, the alternatives presented this evening. Save Central, it's not strategic. It has a limited shelf life, high risk for scope creep, and depletes the cash on hand. Reorganization, a difficult process, but brings tax relief and balances school facilities. New construction, strategic solution. Has a 70, a 50 to 70 year shelf life, yields student and residential benefits through consolidating to one campus. As this board, you are in charge of millions of taxpayer dollars. It is in your, it is your responsibility to explore and analyze multiple options and make a decision, not have a district employee provide you with a sole project to approve. The $85 million referendum was approved by the board basically because you were told new construction was more expensive, from one source who overlooked the fact that the comparisons were to new buildings that were two to three times larger. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson, for asking the questions. We just wish we had had better answers for all of us. We highly suggest you look at current school construction projects in Illinois. Complete a life cycle analysis, perhaps using another consulting firm, and continue to explore other non-taxpayer revenue streams. It really should not be up to a group of citizens to present the data necessary for the board to make an informed decision on spending millions of taxpayer dollars. We won't get an architect's fee if you pick one of these options, and we won't get commission selling the bonds if you go with our financing options. But we do vote, and we vote in, and we vote out, our school board members. I would like to thank all of our speakers who did a lot of work, rolled up their sleeves, and did a whole bunch of stuff. We asked for this time, you wouldn't give it to us. You gave it to DLA. You've given it to the bond company, and you've even given it to a solar company. I thank you for your time, and I will put it to rest. We are all, all very much. Thank you.
All right, we're going to add to notices and communication. We do have one communication. Ms. Johnson?
This is from, oh, Tim Russ, thank you. The board received the following note from Homewood Glen 33C Facility Director, Tim Russ. Good evening. On behalf of our superintendent, Board of Education, and Homewood 33C community, thank you for extending your beautiful facility to us and having everything so well set up for us to come right in. It is most appreciated and makes everything so smooth. Have a great summer. Beth, Tim Russ.
That was in regards to the graduation. Okay, that was held at, I believe it was one day before.
Yeah, they got the nice weather.
And they had the nice weather. That's right. Okay, then you have there your Freedom of Information Requesting, which we had four of them. Moving on to our approval items. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from the May 20th, 2024 regular school board meeting?
Pass second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Travis? Mr. Travis? Hey, Michael, are you there?
Are you muted?
Sometimes he mutes.
Check in.
Okay.
Just have to pass by.
Yep, yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Madam President?
Yes.
For the different days, can we take the regular and closed session minutes approval together?
To group them together? We can do that. Yeah, there is quite a few. Okay, all right. On the regular board meeting for closed minutes, do I have a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from the May 20th, 24 regular board meeting?
I move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Johnson, second by Dr. Shaw. All right, roll call.
Travis? Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from the May 28th, 2024 Special Board Meeting, which includes also the closed session meeting minutes from the May 28th, 2024 Special Board Meeting?
I move.
I second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions to the regular meeting minutes? Hearing none, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis? Johnson? Oh, Mr. Travis, can you hear us? Michael, can you, can you hear us? I just heard him.
Yeah.
So, Johnson?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we missed you on a few votes, Mr. Travis.
He's alive.
Okay, got you now. All right, Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, yes, do I have a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes from the May 30th, 2024 Special Board Meeting, along with the closed session meeting minutes from the May 30th, 2024 Special Board Meeting?
Can we just do that?
We did the 28th.
We did the 28th.
I can second that.
Are there any questions to the regular session meeting minutes? Hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the June 2024 Board Expenses?
I move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to those? Hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Moving on to the Treasurers Report.
You got it. I don't know if there's any questions for Stephanie. Why don't you come on up, Stephanie, and just, if there's any board questions? Is there anything to highlight?
Um, to hi, I'm gonna have a hard time highlighting anything because I'm trying to do the minute piece, so I can't look at it. So, I'm gonna have to turn. I'm trying to do Ms. Maxwell's job, and it's not easy. There's just a couple of things I want to highlight. There's a couple of things that we, we've been renewing to this, right? This is the time of month, or the time of year, actually, that I highlight the insurance renewal for the next year. So, there's information on our Collective Liability Insurance Cooperative renewal in there towards the bottom. The five-year financial forecast has been updated with the final amended budget numbers that are being proposed and the action consideration in the future. It's also updated with all of the other things that the Board has approved up to date for next year, as far as salaries and things go. So, are there any questions about the, the rest of the items, the regular items, I guess I should say?
Thank you. Very informative. Thank you, Ms. Ford.
All right.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the May 2024 Treasurers Report?
I move.
I can second that. Are there any, of course, there were no questions, so, all right, roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Moving on to your Superintendent Reports.
All right, we're gonna jump to, bless you, to just our annual, we're gonna start out with Jeanette Castillo, and I think, Mr. Slager, I'm not sure if you're gonna join or not, we will jump right into, you know, annually, we usually do this in March, we do a full, you know, community, year worth of communication with the community, but as you might remember, Mrs. Castillo was on maternity leave, so we put it off until now. I want to pass out, if you just give me a moment, make sure you have a paper copy of the communications report you're gonna see in front of you right now. Well, thank you, Mr. Kedar, appreciate it. And I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mrs. Castillo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. As Dr. McBride mentioned, I was on maternity leave, so typically I have my annual Public Relations Report. It happens in March, so thank you for the flexibility to be able to present to the Board our annual report for the Public Relations today. So, as you're receiving the annual communications report, this 14-page report, it's basically an overview of our communication efforts and accomplishments for this school year, 2324, although it's already wrapped, right? The school year already completed. We really like to be able to give you this overview. So, as you see behind my screen and you're receiving the document, we can, you've seen before, the communication goals along with the district, and that's in pages two, three, and four. I'll dial down to page five, which I do have an emphasis on some case studies. So, typically, in last summer, that's when I partner up with our Principal's Office and our Businesses Offices as far as enrolling our students and families for the 2324 school year. So, with their help and partnership, it's been great to continue our communication efforts, which everything is all done in-house, and that's the beauty and the luxury of doing what we do every day. And I will continue on to page six, and as you've heard in years past from me and even with the work that we do, language is a priority for me, especially just coming from a different, having a different language. What we have done in June and July of last year of 2023, it was super important for us to have a new member of our team, which is Mrs. Gracia Gonzalez. She is our foundation and PR Secretary. So, with her expertise in schools and having that other language, which is Spanish, it really has been an asset to our district, to be able to have those services and be able to speak to our families that speak Spanish. And that you see her headshot there, which also aligns with the district's goals of human resources, with reflection of diversity and with the community and inclusion, right? With hiring and implementing for recruitment. Also on page six, what you can see is, I talk about language and branding, right? What we've done with Mr. Eric Slager's help is designing banners and offering a new look and feel and having those families welcoming with their own preferred language. So, and these banners, which were at North, and they're here at District and at East, it is with the top four languages, which is English, Spanish, Polish, and Lithuanian. And as new school years rise, we start to see new trends of preferred languages with our parents. You might wonder, how do we find that out, right? What's, how is it that we find the preferred language? Well, that's with technology, with Parentsware, and also with our services and our technology, we can see that the parents have selected when they register what is their preferred language. So, we're able to have that communication, or at least offer them to the communication that they would like to receive, which is in their preferred language. And also, who's here on the table is, you know, our student Board Members, and with that being said, student voice does matter to us, and yes, you are the first. So, with their, you know, experience and monthly, we partnered with them to record, review their scripts, and with Mr. Eric Slager's help, we record those monthly Board Meeting briefs, which you concluded yours not that long ago, and you included your final remarks as student Board Members, wearing your college swag, so I'm glad that you're wearing that today. But here you see a recap of, you know, total number of views. We started on August 21, 2023, with those video-recorded Board Meeting Briefs, and as of just a couple of weeks ago, we had nearly 2,000 total views of all 10, 10, you know, student board brief videos. So, it's been great working with alongside the both of you, and the last Board Meeting brief was with the four student Board Members. I know Akash is not here, so it's been great working with all of them and reviewing their scripts and being able to record their videos. How is it that we would offer those and be able to share those videos is, on our website, on the Student Splash page, we disseminate the videos also and include them in our Friday Weekly Messages, which right now, we're on the summer break. Once we go back into the school year, then we'll go back with our regular communications. And I will continue to pass on, before I pass it on to Mr. Slager, we want to emphasize on websites, webpages, right? So, we currently, with the PR Department and the rest of my team, we have 168 webpages that we manage, and that is a lot, but we are hoping to partner with other staff members and leaders that can be able to manage and be a little bit more consistent as far as information that needs to be posted. And I just wanted to include a quote from our company that we use for our website needs, and they did mention that they utilize our website, they said Lockport Donship High School's website. "It's not just a tool for showcasing, it's a sales team favorite and my go-to resource for illustrating diverse website use cases. The branding guide page sets a new standard as schools nationwide recognize the importance of brand identity. What better way to ensure folks are using the correct logo and colors than to provide them with that information?" And that's with our expertise and case manager with Act G, which is Dontavious Ingram. And I'll pass it to Eric.
Yeah, so, you can see at the bottom there, there's some numbers. This is the last year, the top three most viewed pages on the website. In addition to that, the four and five would be athletics and the belt schedule. And one interesting thing is that this year, cracked our top 10, the number seven most viewed page on the site was our Central Campus Updates page, which we attempted to keep updated regularly, daily, weekly, with videos, information, updates from Dr. McBride. And so, I think that that shows that that type of information being added and maintained on the website is valuable. These top three pages are our top three pages every year, they never change. So, to see a brand-new page like that, something so timely, cracked the top 10 with 24,000 views in the last year on that Central Campus Updates page, I think that really speaks to the importance of the website and keeping it up to date with everything that we have going on. In the last 30 days, just one other piece of info, we had 18,000 new users on the site, so we're continuing to see that growth, of people who have not been to our site before and are coming to it for the first time. And out of that 18,000, almost 2,000 of those were directly from our social media channels. So, as we continue to grow our social channels as well, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, YouTube, that also feeds the website and, you know, keeps the most up-to-date information in front of people.
And I'll move on. If anyone has any questions, I'll continue. We'll go into quarterly digital newsletters. You know, throughout the year, we do publish four digital newsletters, which is in the fall, winter, spring, and summer. So, we're currently working on our summer edition. All of that is done, again, in-house, that is digital, so it's electronic, we're not printing anything, we're not outsourcing anywhere, all the work is done with the help of Grace and Eric and myself. So, currently, with the four editions, or at least three editions, that we have published for the school year 2324, we've had more than 1,400 views. So, we're looking to continue to highlight our students, our staff, and just be able to tell our story, right? With the avenue and platform of social media, our website, and, and our other communications, which is via email as well. So, here you see a breakdown. For the Fall 2023 Edition, we had 936 views, and for the Winter 2024 Edition, it was significantly smaller, 145, and for Spring was 336, and that was just as of June 5. I will continue with our in-house LTHS videos, which I feel like this year, we've done plenty more videos, right, compared to last year, but it's all great, all great to share. And with 2324 school year, we wrapped up with 53 videos. So, in years past, the commencement ceremony, yes, it was the number-one live-streamed video, which it had, you know, over 6,000 views to date, which I think it's also great to have in-house as well, live-streaming the ceremony. And I will continue to page 10, that is the focus of the direct mailers. This year, we worked on three mailers, and again, that was all done in-house. The only thing that we needed to outsource was for printing and postage, and Mr. Slager here, with his expertise in designing all three postcards. The first one was a tri-fold, which, that looked and felt different, right? And the second one and the third one were postcards, two were postcards. So, the size of it was smaller, but they did include QR codes, and we were able to find out the range as far as how many scans we received per postcard, which the first postcard that we sent out was in September of 2023, and that generated 100 scans. And January's postcard generated 292 scans, and then May's, this May 2024 postcard, that was 995 scans with about 700 participants for that survey. We did hear from Innovate K-12, which I know Dr. McBride will mention, but I do want to slide that in for part of Public Relations work, is that once we sent out that direct mailer regarding your input matters, the participation doubled, and we heard that from Innovate K-12. So, we know that it has been received, we have community engagement and interest by them scanning the QR code and more so just participating in the survey as well. And lastly, I will wrap up with social media overview, and just, Mr. Eric Slager will be able to share by the numbers.
Yeah, for sure. So, looking at social media, you can see kind of the numbers here, just some, some total posts, total subscribers, fans, likes, kind of just to get an idea of what our general engagement on these platforms is. What I really wanted to focus on here was that, so we had general growth across Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram, we had a couple hundred new followers join us this year on those three platforms. YouTube, however, we, last year, had 591 subscribers, and as of now, we have 1,100 subscribers. So, we almost doubled our subscriber count in the last year. And I think that can be attributed pretty easily to the types of content, the types of videos we're releasing this year, from the initial ceiling collapse, subsequent move to Lincoln Way North, ultimately, the referendum, the types of content that we're producing led itself more to that engagement. So, that was really exciting to see, just in total, last year, all of our YouTube videos had 15,000 views across the entire year. This year, we had 42,000 views, so almost triple the engagement on YouTube that we had last year. So, hoping to keep that momentum up without the emergencies, obviously, but, you know, now that we have those subscribers, hopefully, we can leverage that and continue to produce the type of content. Out of the top 10 videos that we put out this year, five of them were on Lincoln Way North. So, half of our top 10 was people who were just really, really interested in seeing inside that building, seeing our students in that building, so that's understandable. Another three from the top 10 were Central Updates, and then one was our Senior Commitment Day video, which was really cool. Um, but, you know, now that we have those subscribers, hopefully, we can leverage that and, and continue to produce the type of content. Out of the top ten videos that we put out this year, five of them were on Lincoln Way North. So half of our top ten was people who were just really, really interested in seeing inside that building, seeing our students in that building. Um, so that's understandable. Um, another three from the top ten were central updates. Um, and then one was our Senior Commitment Day video, which was really cool to showcase all of our seniors in their, uh, college gear. And then lastly was our homecoming video, which was just a little promotional piece to kind of showcase all the activities during our homecoming week. So to compare that to last year, our most viewed video last year had just under eight hundred views. Um, and this year, our most viewed video had five thousand two hundred, so pretty significant growth, um, across the board there. And so as we continue to push Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram, um, we hope we'll see those numbers kind of come up as well. So any question about social media or YouTube?
Do students love the Instagram page?
Oh, good. We'll keep that rocking.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm curious about our student board members. How do you guys feel about the different, like, more in-depth about the different social media? Because that is the preferred method, communication between our generation.
Hundred percent. I mean, students are accessing the Instagram first, that's where they're getting their news, not really the splash page, more the Instagram, I would say. And then I think too, the change with the YouTube is that it's student-focused, and so they wanna click on those videos and see themselves.
I also think that, like, students being highlighted on the Instagram, be like, the, I don't know, be recognized for achievements at school, be able to share that, would like see your friends, right, being recognized for all the cool things that they do too. So I think that, that helps with all the shares and everything like that. So I think it's just a way to bring people together and you could share with your family. It's really easy and, and it's pretty fun group.
Do you guys share a lot of content?
Yeah.
I think you both do a phenomenal job. The videos are just spectacular. Um, it, our social media looks so professional, I, I just applaud everything that you guys do. And it all looks great, the mailers. I, I know Dr. McBride had people ask, you know, who did you guys hire? Well, we, we did it a long time ago, so.
I echo Dr. Shaw's comments too, kids doing a phenomenal job, awesome. We're grateful for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna miss doing those student board meetings.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
You could do live from DC.
Technically, you guys can still do one for July, they're, duh.
Don't go that far.
We appreciate the reshares. All right.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Uh, very quickly, and I would really recommend, we, we did, you know, with Innovate K-12, the second part of my, um, report. Innovate K-12 got to a place with the, uh, community survey where we really were only receiving one a day, two a day. So once we saw that trickle, we thought it was a good time to, uh, close up that community input, um, and then start aggregating the data. This is a large language model, and seven St. Lifer from Innovate K-12 explained. It's taking, um, all the type of words that folks use, taking that language, trying to discover sentiments. Um, one, you know, mention that I would, number of you, uh, might, might mention this, and really the only thing I was going to, to, to show today, because I would really recommend board members dig into this, read this, come back next month in July and really go page by page with it when you, when you've fully seen it, because this is really hot off the press. A number of you were in a meeting on Friday morning to sort of, sort of debrief it. Um, I think an important thing, just with any kind of sentiment analysis, we got good reconnaissance on who took the survey, what they wrote. Important with the, the, the sentiment is the way that, that the data analytics folks use positive sentiment or negative sentiment. It's not necessarily yes, it's not necessarily no. It can be anything from, uh, a positive, can be, um, I have a strong feeling, I, of any kind about a topic, all the way to a negative sentiment can be, I have a concern, a worry, an anxious, an anti. So it's, we're aggregating words, um, in a broad spectrum out of very narrow sect, uh, spectrum of, um, positive or negative, how that's used in the data analytics. Thought two things that would really draw the board's attention to. Um, each of the questions generated a action plan. Uh, the first question, you know, an action plan, step one, uh, you know, prioritize renovating Central, step two, engage the community in a much larger, we heard a lot of that tonight, a much larger, long-term, uh, process. We're doing that with the facilities master planning process that's well underway. Explore options for new construction, uh, reevaluate, reevaluate building usage and prioritization, and then looking at alternative ways of, of, of using funds. We heard that tonight, we're talking about that in the facilities master planning. Lance Tease, you adopted a resolution that goes in that direction. Uh, and then I'm just gonna dial up to the second question, the action plan it generated. Develop a long-term plan for infrastructure improvement. Again, facilities master planning process, consolidating, um, campuses. That does work a little, you know, if you consolidate the campus, that doesn't factor out a freshman center necessarily, as Mr. Gowron presented. Um, but it could consolidate on one, one property. Student well-being, mental health, still very much on people's mind, technology, and then bringing the community in and stakeholders in, so surveys like this. I don't know right now, I would just suggest maybe sit, you know, sit with this, read through it, spend a month dissecting it.
Do we still have the raw data about, like, are we gonna get the, like?
They do, if, if you would like to look through that. Um, you know, I think it's gonna be, it's seven hundred responses, written responses will be voluminous. You know, I don't, I don't know how many pages, but I can only imagine, you know, it will be war and peace, uh, style. You know, that's why we use the data analytics to, to crowdsource, walk through, try to find what are the connection points between the language that people use. Yeah.
I have a question about one of the presentations that were just presented during public comment. Um, so in homework thirty-three C, it's like seventeen hundred people approximately for students?
Seventeen hundred students.
Yeah. So would we also be, like, maneuvering our staff to the Lincoln Way as well? Or would all of our staff stay, uh?
Well, that, you know, in a, eh, eh, a situation like that, I think that's very far out, Chelsea, I mean, very, you know, super far out. That gets to some of the complexities of staffing, of schedules, of requirements, of graduation, you know, there's, there's so many layers there. So it's hard to reduce it down to a simple, oh, seventeen hundred students, and then, you know, wha, wha, what, you know, where the staff is, right? The staff follow them. Um, there are not a lot of metaphors in the state of Illinois for it, because detachment has been such a difficult process in the state, um, to enact. So there's not a lot of things to, to look at to say, well, what actually does that look like? You know, are there some things that we can look to?
Has there been any school that, like, detached before, or?
I, I'm sure there have. I'm not aware i- in this area of something recently. That doesn't mean it didn't happen, right? But it is a difficult and long, long, long legal process, so.
I think there was an instance where, if, just, 'cause I did look into it, the last time that a major thing did happen was probably like in the early two thousand. But even it was, even though it was only like two subdivisions that were technically unconsolidated, but I had to, just from what I've seen floating about in the ether internet.
And, and I also might, might suggest that's not an option of all the options that we've heard tonight, that this community survey represents. There's no data in this community survey to, to point to that, to support that. So I think you have to take the data and face what, what it is, what are people suggesting, and what are people saying, right? What you'd hate to do is take an action step like this, you've given a survey, seven hundred people. Um, as I always say to the board, your, your role is to represent everyone. Um, and, uh, you, you know, you do that through election, that's kind of how we do things around here. You know, we vote. But, you know, I would, the one, one reason why I drew you to the action plan is because it gives you a roadmap of a variety of different things. Now, even some of these things obviously factor each other out, right? You know, you, you, you know, uh, have to make some choices throughout, but it gives you some nice steps. And I believe one of the most important things that a board can do is if you asked and people answered, to really, to use it as a template.
We would have to go back and look at, uh, is it the, it's called the market? The guy that came in with, did the, looked at the census? He said, the market, we know the word.
Yeah, Jerome McKibben.
We have to go and look at that too.
Yeah, we certainly could return to that report.
With the rest of the stuff.
Right.
So it's not like one piece of data.
Right, and the facilities master planning process that we're, we've already entered into, we've had one meeting, we have two others scheduled. Um, you know, that, the, that committee, you know, just a wee bit of my report, really decided to go, to go big, right, to be expansive. And so that means you're gonna look at the demographics report, you're gonna look at this report, you're going to look at the programming, you're gonna do, you're gonna look at the idea of a freshman center. I think that, in many ways, is a starting place, just because the district is set up that way. So folks have to look at that existential setup and say, well, is that the setup? You know, we heard a little bit about that, 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 that we want. And, you know, I know the curriculum committee of the board has looked at that extensively. So, you know, I suggest we read up and, you know, come ready in July to really dig into this with your questions and your perceptions and your observations. And then finally, the last piece of my report, if you drive by Central, uh, there's an army of trades there right now. Uh, like I said, we have the huge benefit of opening that up, we're closing it up now. Um, we've had to deal with some common masonry, we've had to deal with some common, uh, carpentry that's gotta get done before those ceilings are closed up. But that is moving, moving a pace, you know? We're still, I think, on target for August nineteenth of having students come back in.
When is, when does school start?
Uh, August nineteenth. Busy August, very busy August. That's my report, unless you have a question.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our information reports.
Yeah, any, you know, I'd probably ask, maybe if we just kind of bring it in, any, any, you see it, uh, presented, kind of common language, building a common academic language. Um, you know, questions for Dr. Christophero or, or anything? I know the, um, this was the focus of the curriculum committee, uh, last week.
I appreciate your time at the curriculum committee, just going over this and kind of the process that came about in order to come up with the, this terminology that this is going to be displayed in every classroom, right?
Yeah.
Or it's like, where it's kind of the posters.
Yep. And we shared and they saw, we talked about the process, and really, we talked about the process to come to clear definitions, success criteria, and scaffolding questions, so that when your student and teacher ask you to draw an inference, and you don't really have an idea that there's a resource that you can go to or a parent could go to to help their child with that skill.
So, and this will also be available on the webpage for parents to utilize?
On Student Splash page.
Right, and these are just all core academic activities that we ask students to engage in, so it, it obviously matters if someone asks you to infer, synthesize, create a claim, if, if students and teachers have a common understanding of what that word is, and not using those academic tools differently. If I ask someone to go get a hammer, and I really mean a screwdriver, I probably shouldn't use the word hammer, uh, because they might not get me a hammer, right? And I might confuse them.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Christophero. All right, principal.
I do have a quick question. Was there a maximum for the response? Was there a maximum amount of words that a person could type, or was it on?
It was, it was unlimited, so, I mean, you know, I don't know if there was a max response. You know, the biggest response, I don't know what it is, but we didn't set there any limits.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Did you get a survey?
Huh? I just don't remember if there was a res-.
Did you do the survey?
What?
Did you do the survey?
I mean, technically.
Yeah.
But I didn't, like, write war and peace into it, I mean.
No, I mean aggregate, Mr. Navarro, like, seven hundred responses, even if they, each person wrote a paragraph, that's seven hundred paragraphs.
Like, I don't know if somebody, like, wrote a book into their response.
I just curious if you, if you got one and did it.
I, I looked at it.
All right, good evening.
Good evening. Um, as you see in our reports every month, showcases our students, um, and what they, they do, um, you know, in and out of the classroom. And we are so incredibly proud, um, of concluding another school year and everything that our students have done. Um, and tonight, really, just wanted to say a couple of thank yous to Jeanette and Eric. Um, what they do for us, uh, to publicize and make our district look good, um, you know, goes without saying, they are phenomenal. Um, they did a lot of videos for us this year at North. Um, so my Booper reels, I hope, are somewhere in the vault, Eric. But they are phenomenal, you know, and, and always helping us to communicate and get the word out there. So you are such a huge asset to our district, so thank you so much for what you do. Um, what you saw tonight, I mean, eh, that's just, you know, the tip of the iceberg on what they do on a daily basis for us. Uh, to student board members, thank you. Thank you for being willing to take on this task. You know, it's a lot of work, and, and you guys really put your heart and soul into, you know, taking this seriously and really coming in informed, asking great questions, um, and being a part of, of the process. So thank you for doing this. I know you guys are going to go on to great things, so very proud of you, incredibly proud. So, and then the last thank you, um, as his last official board meeting, as our principal of East Campus, to Dr. John Greenan. Um, he's been my sidekick, he is truly amazing. And I think that, you know, when you talk to students, staff, parents, everyone in the community, you know, Dr. Greenan has been the face of East Campus now, um, for so many years and is so well-respected. Um, and it's just a, a true testament to who he is as a person, a leader, an educator, and it speaks to his character and his integrity that he has led this building. I'm grateful that he's not going far, just over to, to district office, but, um, thanking Dr. Greenan for his leadership, um, and everything that he has done at a building level, you know, throughout the years. So, thank you, and I know that you're gonna do great things throughout this.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, so I feel like it's been for the past year plus, as a board, you've asked Carrie and I to share with you, um, what we have been working on most. And I, I've really enjoyed, besides touching on our report, sharing with you, you know, the, the things that, that we have done. And the reason why I, I mention that is just because I guess this past month, I've really tried to reflect, um, and it's giving me an, even more of an appreciation, um, of being the principal here at, at La Portant Shap High School at, at East Campus. I've been given the opportunity to, um, write a farewell message for our Porter newsletter, um, a little farewell in the Sunday message, and it's just giving me a chance to, again, appreciate, um, working here, a- at the great school that we have. Um, I have done the best, uh, that I've could, eh, that I, that I absolutely could with representing our school, um, celebrating students, celebrating our staff. Um, we have an awesome school community, and, uh, it is two words that I've used a lot here as people have been asking me about the principal job. It's, it's truly been an honor, and I've had a lot of pride, um, in what our school district has accomplished and what, um, we will continue to accomplish. I appreciate everyone, um, who has reached out to me, whether it be an email or a card or a phone call. Um, it has made me feel even more, uh, proud of, of being the principal here. So in some ways, it's made me feel like I was retiring, and I definitely am not retiring, unlike, uh, Tony Kundari, and I wanna thank Tony for, um, you know, not everyone gets the opportunity to work close to the person that you're going to replace, and Tony has been fantastic. There's, there's too many people for me to thank individually, um, in a short amount of time. Um, one of the things that I was a little, um, I don't, maybe I shouldn't say surprised, but one of the many great things about being principal was that, um, I had the opportunity to network with a lot of principals. I wasn't thinking about that too much going into the job. Um, our Southwest Suburban Conference principals, and then I actually joined a group that Dr. McBride started when he was at Dequa Valley, which was like twenty-plus principals from DuPage, Will County area. Um, I always believed that you really shouldn't judge someone in, um, well, you shouldn't judge anyone, period, but, um, especially when it comes to what they do, um, unless you are actually in their shoes. And I've always kind of taken that with me and, and try to be a good listener, try to really understand where people are coming from. And the reason why I mention that is because, um, it has helped to have a network of other principals who know about the challenges of the job, the, the great parts of the job. So I was really able to network with a lot of principals. Um, but my favorite one is the one who's sitting next to me. Because we have a unique school district where we have, you know, twenty-five-plus years of freshman center, so we have East Campus principal and a freshman center principal, and not every school has that. So to work with someone so closely, um, knowing what we go through in our jobs, our great jobs, um, just has been, I said the word earlier, invaluable to me. Uh, she was the first person I saw when I worked, walked through those doors twenty-two years ago when I was a social studies teacher, when this was a much different room. Um, I think it was called the Community Wellness Center, um, Room. Um, and then being the first-year dean, first-year principal, and then just over the years, continuing to work close together.
And then being the first-year dean, first-year principal, and then just over the years continuing to work close together, especially these last five years as principal. I thank Carrie Green, I admire her tenacity, her love for the school district, who she is as a person, as a mom, and I really appreciate everything that she's done for me. So, just simply want to thank everybody. Yes, I am not going away like Tony Candari is. I'm very proud to move on to a new position, very excited to welcome Dr. Jacqueline Johnson, she's a great person. It's been great working with her these last few months, and again, thank you again for this opportunity to be the principal here at Lockport East Campus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Dr. McBride, can you remind me again when Dr. Green officially becomes the?
July first.
July, July first.
Your last meeting.
Yeah, so that is, this is officially his last meeting.
His last principal report.
As a principal. All right. Have you run overnight field trip there?
Yeah, just so you can see, we always want to keep you informed, heading down to Arizona, there's just one.
You have your maintenance report?
Yeah, very detailed maintenance report, you know, just, you know, really gets into everything. Summer is the busy season, you know, where we do so much upkeep, upkeep. So you can see, you know, all the things that we're doing, that we're getting into. Any questions for the maintenance report?
All right, then, moving on to the consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items number two through seventeen?
So moved.
I second. It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions to any of those consent agenda items? All right, hearing, non-roll call.
Travis.
Yeah.
Navara.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the food service menu for the 2025, 2024, 2025 school year?
So moved.
I second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I noticed that there was an increase in the prices.
In the food prices.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, they've been the same for the past two years, so this is really, and I think you know, throughout the pandemic, Quest, at our request, did not do any any increases, so they've really, if you go all the way back to, there really hasn't been an increase since 2020. So this is some catch-up. We're no longer in the federal school launch program, which would, you know, be a way that students would have a discount. That means different things as well. So this is a way for Quest, you know, to kind of concurrent with the cost of things that have been deferred really over the past couple of years.
How does this impact the schools that we provide lunches for?
This, yeah, go ahead, yeah, please do, Mrs. Gray.
Um, it, these prices don't affect them. Actually, within the last, within this last year, our arrangement with the two feeder districts that we deliver the meals to is actually changing. And the reason it has to change is because ISB has forced those districts through and off, like, so there was, those school districts had food service audits, right? And those audits required, the federal government required ISB to tell the school districts that they have to bid their own food service, they can't go through our bid anymore. So, District 91 and District 89 prepared their own bids this past year, and Quest actually won those bids as well. There was a chance they might not have, but they won their bids. Next year, they will continue to provide the meals out of our kitchens, but they will be billing those districts directly. What we will potentially be billing them for is the delivery, right? Because we do deliver them for them, and we're working that out with Quest and the districts of how that's going to be potentially split. We will probably be bringing something to the board about that in the future. But we were just discussing that within the last month with Quest, and Mr. Thompson was gonna reach out to the feeder districts about how we wanted to work that piece of it out. Because previously, we had an intergovernmental agreement with each of these districts where we had a slight increase in their cost that covered them, you know what I mean? So, Quest will charge us.
These are all native prices for our students.
Yes, this is just our students, what you're seeing on the agenda right now.
Okay.
Thank you. I know it's already been motioned and seconded. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Navara.
Yes.
Travis.
Yeah.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the English text for the 2024, 2025 school year?
So moved.
I can second that. All right, are there any questions? Ms. Johnson, do you have a question?
No.
You look like, oh, no, you look like you had a question there.
No, I'm questioning this laptop. Oh, okay, ask him, ask him a question.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Shaw.
Yes.
Travis.
Yeah.
Navara.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 consolidated district plan?
So moved.
I can second that again. Are there any questions? Hearing, non-roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Navara.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Travis.
Yeah.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the licensed administrator contracts for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions? All right, hearing, non-roll call.
Shaw.
Yes.
Navara.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Travis.
Yeah.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the non-licensed director salaries for the 2024, 2025 school year?
I move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? Hearing, non-roll call.
Travis.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Navara.
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the non-licensed employees not covered by the collective bargaining agreements for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year?
I move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw. Any questions? Hearing, non-roll call.
Navara.
Yes.
Travis.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Shaw.
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's new contract?
So moved.
I second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Johnson. We had all our questions answered, so, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Travis.
Yeah.
Navara.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the amended budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Lopez Caniva and second by Ms. Johnson. All right, roll call.
Travis.
Yeah.
Navara.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. We have no policy updates.
For now.
For now.
For now.
Dr. McBride is woefully behind, so we will see some policy in July.
All right, announcements.
Yeah, very quickly. Wednesday, it's a state holiday, schools must be closed. It is celebrating Juneteenth, the end of slavery in the United States of America, so a great celebration of freedom. June 26th, 6:30 PM, right here, we're moving to the evenings in the Porter Room. We're doing a facility master planning process, we'll continue on with that. July 15th is the board meeting, and then July 17th, 6:30 PM here, facilities, a master planning process. And just reminding the board and the administrative chaperone, the last two weeks of July, on our exchange to Yokohama, to Japan, so, looking forward to returning.
And who else is going with you?
Carla Button, and over the weekend on Saturday, our Japanese J-LEAF teacher, Eme Onodo, he returned. First time he's been home in two years, but he's going to meet us as a third chaperone in Yokohama.
Okay.
So, that'd be nice.
And how many students are going?
Uh, I would say eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
Think I'm right about that.
All right, okay. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
I second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Johnson. All in favor?
I have one last thing to ask, though.
Sure.
How does our board members feel, our student board members feel right now? That's officially the last time I get to ask anything, so we can adjourn now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, you cannot leave, board members, we have a ton of things for you to sign.